For your patience, we appreciate it. I would like to open the commission, I'm sorry, commission. Sorry about that. Historic Review Board for Tuesday, November 19th. And we'll call to the meeting to order and get roll call, please.
Board member Lawrence.
Present.
Board member Green.
Present.
Board member Sumrock Folkerson.
Present.
Vice Chair Powell.
Present.
And Board Member Edgar is absent.
Very good. I did want to introduce a new member, Julia Folkerson. She's, you can talk about your history if you'd like, but not too much. But we're glad to have her. She's had a lot of great experience and she'll bring a lot to the Historic Review Board. And we really appreciate you taking the opportunity to be with us.
Thank you. I am Julia. Thank you for having me. I'm an architectural historian with a local consulting, engineering consulting firm. And yeah, I have experience with review boards back east where I'm from. And happy to be here and to contribute.
Thank you very much. Let's move on to, we have meeting minutes to approve. Has everybody looked at those meeting minutes? And do I have a motion to approve?
A motion to approve.
I'll second.
We have a motion and second. Any other questions on the minutes? Alrighty then, we'll take roll call.
Board member Lawrence.
Present.
Board member Green.
Aye.
Board member Folkerson.
Present.
Vice Chair Powell.
Aye.
Okay. Any public comments not on the agenda this evening that we know about? All right, great. All right, we will move into our first public hearing. And I'm going to read our information here. The following is to be read prior to this meeting. So let's get the record number here. Oh wait, that's. And we are at GLUA 24-028 and HR 24-011. Members of the Historic Review Board are to be unbiased. Before the start of the hearing, I'll ask the Historic Review Boards whether they have any potential conflicts such as family, financial or business relationships with any of the applicants, or with regard to the land in question. I will also ask whether any of the Historic Review Board have discussed the application in question with any of the parties or have independent knowledge of relevant facts, such as from a visit to the site in question. Any members of the audience may question any Historic Review Board person about their disclosures. A staff report has been prepared for each application and has been made available to the public seven days before the first public hearing. The staff report identifies the approval criteria that apply to each applicant's proposal. Staff has analyzed the criteria which are contained in the staff report. This quasi judicial hearing procedure the Historic Review Board will follow is set out in state law and the Oregon City Municipal Code. The hearing procedure steps are shown on the Historic Review Board website. Public testimony will be called on in the order it was requested in advance of the meeting. If you have not emailed citystaff@planning.org to request to speak and would like to testify, please raise your virtual or physical hand when I ask if there are any others in the audience who would like to participate. For the public record, please begin all testimony stating your name and city of residence. If you'd like to receive a copy of the notice of decision, please state your mailing address or email address. Testimony and evidence should be directed toward the applicable approval criteria. If you believe other criteria apply in addition to those addressed in the staff report, identify and discuss those criteria and explain how and why you believe they apply to the application under consideration. Any person may submit written material while the public record is open on each application. Any written materials received by the city staff during the time period in which the record is open will be placed in the record. Written materials submitted during the public hearing must be presented to the city staff in order to become part of the record. If a person intends for PowerPoint presentations, reports, pictures or other exhibits used in the oral testimony to be placed in the record, copies must be submitted to the city staff while the record is open. If they're not given a staff, they will not be included in the record. Anyone, any person wishing a continuance to present additional evidence and testimony or to keep the record open to respond to new evidence must make that request before the public testimony portion of the hearing is closed. If the Historic Review Board makes a decision with which you disagree, any issue that you may wish to appeal must have been raised on the record for the consideration of the City Commission or Luba or both. Without raising the issue on the record with sufficient detail and accompanied by statements or evidence that the city and all parties can respond to, the issue will not be deemed appealable to the City Commission or State Land Use Board of Appeals. In addition, the failure of an applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient detail to allow the local government or its designated to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. Okay, now we'll open the record for GLUA 24-028 and HR-24-011, 416 Fourth Street Solar Panels. We'll now ask each Historic Review Board member if they have any ex parte contacts, conflict of interest, bias, or any other statement to declare or have visited the site. If there was a site visit, the Historic Review Board must declare what he or she perceived. Board member A, Board member Green.
I have visited the site, no ex parte contact and no conflict of interest.
All right, let's see. Board member Lawrence.
I have visited the site. I have visited the site. I have no ex parte contact and no conflicts of interest.
And Board Member Folkerson.
I have not visited the site. I have no ex parte contact and no conflicts of interest.
And I have visited the site as well. I have no ex parte contact or conflict of interest, sorry. So we will now, does, oh, does anyone in the audience wish to question the Historic Board Members on their comments? Seeing none, we'll now commence with the staff report.
Thank you, Chair Powell. We'll get the staff report up. This is a request to review a proposed solar panel installation that does not meet HRB Policy 12 on a staff level. So items that cannot be reviewed through the building permit process are sent to the Historic Review Board. Not that they are a good project or a bad project, that's just the threshold of what gets reviewed by the board and what does not. And so this property is at 416 Fourth Street. Let's see if I can get this turned on. So this is the E. Martin rental. It was incorrectly identified on the survey form as a Richard Lundey rental. That's actually next door. It's a modest one-story queen and vernacular home built about 1895. The proposal is 21 panels, nine on each side and three on the small rear roof. The house's current roof is gray composition shingles, but the applicant is moving forward this winter to replace the roof. And so there'll be now be black shingles or very dark gray shingles. And so that aspect of the policy will be met. So HRB policy specifies that solar technology be placed on secondary roof planes to be approved on a staff level. In this instance, there is really only one opportunity for solar panels on a roof plane that would meet HRB Policy 12. It's only the three little small ones on the back. So as a project, this really couldn't move forward on a staff level. In this instance, also partial approval does not seem prudent to meet the goals of the historic district or the applicant's goals. The panels together may provide a continuous feature on the roof which could aid in de-emphasizing the solar array. So removing one or two or slightly reducing the size of the project, staff finds doesn't, you know, decrease any impact. I mean, it is on, like, and actually keeping the solar arrays kind of proportional on both sides seems the most prudent approach and will actually probably be less visible from the street. Let's see. So as you can see, the solar technology, Policy 12, what I've highlighted in red is the area that the applicant is not meeting and therefore requires the board to make findings for approval and identify the match, the roof color. They are proposing to install, reinstall a roof as part of this process with a darker color. So the property is located at 416 Fourth Street, just one house in. You'll see it highlighted with the arrow. This is the photo from the 2002 survey form. This slide shows the proposed roof mechanical equipment plan, but it also shows the proposed solar arrays. You can kind of see the layout. So the Historic Review Board looks at the criteria for approval through our municipal code. We have findings in the staff report for items one through nine. Specifically, you're looking at the comprehensive plan and how the city views compliance with 1740. And I'm going to show you. Oh, sorry. I'm going to go back. So here's the survey form. Then you have the layout of the proposed roof structure. And then the municipal code. So our comprehensive plan, we kind of have two policies kind of working together or against each other depending on the situation. But your goal is to kind of, how do you balance both of those city goals, which is A, the historic policy strategy, which is encourage property owners to preserve historic structures and the state as close to their original construction as possible while allowing the structure to be used in economically viable manner. And the economic development strategy, which looks at encourage siting and construction of new development to take advantage of solar energy, minimizing energy use and maximizing opportunities for public transit. So we have a support for investment in solar energy and also protecting our historic resources. So balancing both of those. And that is why we're out of hearing for projects like this. I proposed our standard conditions of approval. Please see that I have Xed out item number two. That was from previous solar panel application. So with the motion will be removal of condition of approval number two. So it'll be one, three, four, and five, which is our standard conditions related to the siting of solar panels. And you have the options this evening. Approve the proposal and adopt the associated findings with conditions. Approve the proposal with modified conditions and provide those additional findings to staff to integrate into the notice of decision. Deny the proposal, close the record and continue the hearing to a date certain to adopt final findings, or continue the hearing to a date certain and request additional information from the applicant. So I'll be available for any questions. The applicant is here as well as their solar consultant on Zooms if you have any questions. But in this situation, just to recap, this is a very small vernacular cottage and modifying to remove, you know, a few panels. And this, in this instance, staff really doesn't see as meeting kind of the intent. To me, it's either, is this proposal appropriate for the size of the building or is it inappropriate? So on a staff level, I really think that the small size of the roof, its location, the black, the new black roof will go a long way to kind of visually make these panels kind of recede. And I think it's a very viable proposal. So I'm available for any questions and I know the applicant is here as well.
Great. Does anybody have questions of staff?
I don't.
Okay. Well, then let's have the applicant come on up.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm here. Thank you guys for your time. Okay. I'm Shirley Wall. I live at 416 Fourth Street.
You can sit down, Shirley.
What?
You can sit down.
Okay. And I've been there 27 years. And we're just really interested in putting the solar on to save money and also for the environment. And we are getting a new roof. The roofing's already there. We're waiting for some dry days to get it put on. So the roofing's already arrived. It's going to be black. So then it wouldn't be a contrast so with the solar panels.
Okay, great. Any questions of the applicant?
I have one question. During the installation process, have you been informed as to the impact of the underside of the roof?
The underside?
Like the, the actual roof?
We, they'll do an inspection before they do that. They haven't done that yet because we wanted to get approval before they went to the next step and inspected the roof. I had a roof put on 26 years ago and they told me about five years ago, the roofer, he did some repairs and said, you've got about five years left. So, you know, so that's, they do an inspection before they did it, so.
Okay.
And if I could jump in too, as the operations manager for Capstone Solar, I can answer any questions that you guys have about attachments. We haven't completed a final design because we wanted to wait for your guys' approval. But as far as attaching, we'll use a flashed attachment, which is usually preferred by roofers, especially getting a new roof, with one single lag that will lag directly into the rafters of the home. She has a vaulted ceiling and an upstairs bedroom. So there's really no other option than to do that. So we'll flash the attachments with the metal flashing in one single lag. They'll be every four foot underneath the array, top and bottom of each panel. And the weight of the total solar is going to be roughly 2.6 pounds per square foot under any given array on the rooftop. If that helps to clarify attachment.
That does. That's exactly what I wanted to know. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Any other questions?
Just a question maybe for the representative there. On the shading study, I noticed that the one panel that's adjacent to the gas B vent is yellow and then also the panels on the back are in yellow. Is that just in reference to shading? I'd noticed also on the roof that there's appears to be like a kitchen exhaust vent a little bit above the gas vent. And I didn't know if that panel was in question to be omitted because of the equipment in the roof or why that one panel was shown in yellow?
Yeah, what you guys are looking at there, that's a solar software that a lot of installers use. It's called Aurora. What it's actually showing is that we have a one-foot setback around any obstruction on the roof. So it's saying that that panel is very close to those obstructions. A follow-up to this meeting, if it gets approved, we're going to come out with a drone and process it, a scan apply model so that we can have 4K image of the rooftop and then better fit. But the yellow is representing that it's close to fire setbacks. We see the access pathways on the roof. On the back of the roof, those three panels are really close to the 18-inch at each of the hips. So if it gets close like that, it'll let you know that you're very close to either a reconstruction or a fire setback.
Got it. So that, that would be clarified with your drone survey then? And I guess that the only question in my mind would be, would it be questionable that that one panel would be eliminated, which, you know, kind of breaks up their array? Or would, would the consideration be to move the exhaust vent if necessary to accommodate the panel array?
Yeah, we could, we could move it if need be. I'm not sure exactly. I think it looks like maybe a static vent or some sort of air over water vent. We'll have to confirm once we do our site, site assessment. We haven't been to the site yet. We did all this, you know, through tools that are online. So we'll send somebody out to get exact measurements on it. Ideally, the array fits in that location and meets the fire setback pathways that you guys need or that permitting is going to need. But if we needed to move things, we can do that. We've moved vents in the past. It's, it's not a big problem as long as it's not, you know, a furnace or something like that that's, that's a major construction. We would, we would drop the panel in that case.
Yeah. It's just something that's kind of come up in the past when we've discussed visible arrays, trying to keep the continuity and so forth. You know, I think would be important, not crucial, but it would be ideal to not have, you know, one panel missing or if it could be accommodated, so.
Absolutely. We prefer it as well. Aesthetically, it's pleasing. That's why we chose that layout. We would like to keep it that way. It also gets her really close to 100% offset with the system. She does have some additional room on that side. We didn't crowd that, that side towards those vents because it is the main street-facing side of the home. So we tried to just match it up, but she had a little more room on that side to move panels around a little bit. But we would like to keep it the way that it is if at all possible.
Yeah, yeah. Great. That's all I got.
I've got a question as long as we've got you. The equipment, it appears that it's on the side of the house as opposed to the back of the house?
Yeah. She has a deck that takes up the entire back of the house. It's got a covered area. She does barbecues, things like that in the summertime. She has a garden back there. She doesn't have a ton of room for equipment and the existing electrical panel is right behind the location that we chose as well as her utility meter. So usually those need to be co-located per the utility or within 10 feet, a line of sight basically. But she does have seating back there and really limited room on the back side of the house with a deck that spreads across the entire backside.
Okay. I'm not that concerned, I'm not terribly concerned, but one of our, you know, goals is to keep it out of the visual path. And that is the side of the house that you can see, open to the street. So I, and we don't really have a picture of what that equipment package would look like, but I'm assuming it'll be low.
Yeah, and the condition of approval now for now requires it to be shielded. So as part of the building permit, if from the pedestrian view on the street you can see it, we would work with the applicant to plant landscaping or even do like a small little, you know, fence to, or a panel to hide it.
Sure, something to cover the equipment.
But we, but usually that's done kind of once, once everything's installed to get a better handle. But that's what staff would be working at the building permit process to see if any shielding would need to happen.
Great. Answers my question. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions, the applicant? All right. Thank you very much. Thanks for coming in and also thank your representative. We appreciate that.
Yeah.
Having you here.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
All right. Now we'll take it to the group. Do you have comments?
I have no comments. I, I'm reading a motion, so.
Are they going to tell me?
Somebody else has comments.
Mr. Green.
I think it's an appropriate installation itself, yeah, with the roof colors going to match. So, yeah.
Okay.
As long as there's not tremendous damage to the rafters, I don't see an issue there. And there seems to be.
I'm sorry, we're having a hard time. I'm having a hard time hearing your discussion up there.
Oh, sorry.
Are all the mics on? I'm having a hard time.
Sorry, we're not picking up. So speak into the microphones, please. Thank you. I think it's a good application. I'm, you know, the location of the house next to the other house, you're really not going to see a lot from the street on that side. I was a little concerned. It seemed like a lot, a lot on that side, but looking at it from all directions, it really is a pretty good, pretty good application, the way it's set up. I love the idea that it's going to be a black roof. Thank you for that. That's going to really be beneficial, I think. And with an all-black panel, it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be a big problem. And that I think is, one of the things we talked about is we view it from the street, really when you won't see it from the street other than from the high side, high street side. So I don't think it's going to be a big problem. Question, do we, I know we got something from the Neighborhood Association. Did we get anything from any of the neighbors? Okay. All right. Great. Well.
I would make a motion then to approve GLUA 24-028, HR 24-011.
As amended, just real quickly, as amended to remove that condition that was related, yeah.
Conditions, yeah.
Yeah, as amended.
Yeah, as amended with the conditions shown by staff. Correct.
I second. Hey, we have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Board member Lawrence.
Aye.
Board member Green.
Aye.
Board member Folkerson.
Aye.
Vice Chair Powell.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much. Good luck on your project.
Yeah, thank you.
You guys, thank you for being here. We appreciate your, your input.
Yeah.
Yeah, that is a good, a good point. I mean, it's great to have a representative here that can answer these questions for us as well as the documentation that came with it. It made our job a lot easier.
Great presentation.
Yeah, really well done. So we appreciate that. Thank you. Okay. Moving on, we're going to, out of, we're closing the public hearings and we're going into a discussion on compatible change. And we're going to have an introduction here.
Thank you, Chair Powell. HRB is part of the 2023-2025 HRB Work Plan. The board adopted to revisit, we call the, we called the compatible change process that was put on hold to, I want to say a little bit into COVID. And with lack of staff, it was kind of tabled. And so the goal with the compatible change project, both then and now, is to take a look to see, is our definition of what we call new construction for additions, does it, is it relevant to what the community needs? And by I say that is, in Oregon City, we define new construction as either standalone buildings or additions of more than 30% of non-designated resources. And the, and generally this is in the McLaughlin Conservation District because any addition in Kanema is required to be reviewed by the board. So really, these are non-designated resources in McLaughlin. And when are additions enough that require a type III public hearing? So when the district was created in the 80s and the definition of new construction, the determinations was a 30% addition or more. That was the number that said if you add more than 30% of the size of, to the structure, you're going in front of the Historic Review Board to look to see that the addition is not adversely affecting the significance of the district. So over time, there were projects that were underneath that threshold, but the public felt really did adversely affect or really even if they didn't, they were big enough that they should have gone through a public hearing. And so the goal of this next year is to look at what are different ways to think about thresholds for historic review when additions to non-designated structures occur? The process will be, it's, you know, we'll go through a public engagement process, working with Kristin Minor, who I will introduce in just a second, our consultant, reaching out to the neighbors, historic property owners. And at some point, the board will come up with a recommendation of, most likely a code change to our definition or code change to our historic review chapter. With that, the board will then present to the City Commission. And if the City Commission agrees, then it'll move forward and through a legislative code adoption process. So because this is funded by our certified local government grant through the State Historic Preservation Office, the timeline for this part, kind of the public outreach and the Historic Review Board recommendation really goes until July. So we have kind of through, and you see in the staff report, I have kind of a January through, February, January through March, early interaction. Then you have some synthesis and kind of draft recommendations until you finally have a final recommendation to the City Commission in June or July. With that, we run through our certified local government grant. And if that, the board does receive approval from the city commission to move through legislative findings and legislative process, any code changes go to the planning commission and the city commission through the ordinance process for legislative change. It was kind of a two-part process. So where we're here now, we were able to hire some help for this with Kristin Minor. I'll have her introduce herself and kind of her first thoughts about how best to think about when things should come in front of the board and when things really are subject to kind of that little extra review of a public hearing. And I'm going to pass it over to her, but really my goal tonight is kind of a meet and greet, an understanding of the issues. She's going to hear a little bit of Kristin's thoughts and then really as much feedback you can give back to her is helpful because we won't see each other again until the January Historic Review Board meeting. Our December meeting is canceled. It falls either on or near Christmas. So we will not be having a December meeting. So really, as much feedback you can give back to Kristin, we'll be more prepared when we meet again in January. So I'm going to hand it back to Kristin.
Wonderful. Can everyone hear me okay? Great. So my name is Kristin Minor and you're probably wondering what, you know, what skills I bring to this. So I'll talk just a little bit about myself. I live in Portland. I was a member of the Portland Landmarks Commission for eight years. And I was chair for five of those. So 2015 to 2023, I guess. My background is as an architect. So I got licensed as an architect, actually in New York. I'm originally from New Mexico, but I was out there working as an architect for almost 10 years and then moved to Oregon in 1996 and have raised my family. After I started to work for architectural firms here for a couple of years, I then moved into city planning. So that's sort of the next phase of my career. I was a city planner in Portland for about 10 years again. And then after that, my job alarm clock went off again and I went into private practice. I'm a consultant. So, you know, I just have myself as my business, but I am a historic consultant. And that's been since 2018, I think. So I really have kind of dipped my toe in, you know, various aspects of code-related projects, of planning and of architecture. So I hope that I can really, you know, help you work through these issues. And, you know, it might be kind of fun, kind of interesting to really think about what are the factors that are going to be not only easy to use, but really have, you know, kind of shape development in the way that you want to shape development in McLaughlin? Let's see, before I sort of get into the memo here, I did want to say that Carrie Richter's proposal, or not proposal, Carrie Richter's presentation about the changes that may be coming down the pike are pretty interesting. And I think they have the potential to affect this project in some ways. Hopefully, of course, as Christina noted, that those requirements can be, you know, can be exempted. But it still does probably bear some thought. So I will definitely educate myself about what those are and what it might mean for new development in McLaughlin.
Great. Yeah, I think it's going to be, take some real creative thinking from what we just heard. I mean, it seems like there's going to be a big challenge ahead of us here to really do what we want. You know, what we perceive as the right thing to do may not be perceived by everyone else as the right thing to do. So it'll be good. It'd be good to have your creative mind there. Thank you.
Right. Okay, I will go ahead then and just kind of dive into the memo that I believe was sent to you a week ago or so, right?
It should be attached to the agenda.
Yeah. And the code language, of course, is going, you know, we're going to have to keep kind of coming back to this. So I do hope that this memo is something that you can keep with you throughout this project. We're going to, you know, keep revisiting a few of these issues and topics that are in this memo. So the definition of new construction, of course, a new building or structure separate from an existing building that is larger than 200 square feet. So of course, that's a standalone, as Christina explained, or any building addition that is 30% or more in area, be it individual or cumulative of the original structure. So that's another thing entirely. That's an addition. So I think we'll want to examine both of those and see if, you know, both of those are working or neither. I certainly do have some questions about maybe just specifying whether, say, you know, this applies to roofed structures or non-roofed, you know, does it apply to a deck? So it could be as, you know, this project could be as small as just adding some explanatory language, you know, and basically kind of keeping what's in here. But it also, you know, it could be entirely throwing this language out and starting again. So, you know, you've got quite a range, I think, of possibilities in front of you as to what's going to be proposed to city council ultimately. Now, I thought I should go through briefly what the responsibilities of the city are towards historic districts. And that has been explained by the State Historic Preservation Office. They put out a fairly new, you know, 2018 Planning for Historic Preservation in Oregon Guidance Document. And it really explains that the, there's a base level of protection, which is protect these resources from demolition. And I included the definition of demolition because it gets very interesting very quickly. Demolition doesn't just, of course, mean that somebody comes with a wrecking ball. It also, in the case of historic resources, means that its cultural, historic or architectural character and significance is lost. So there could be additions or alterations to a resource that cause it to be basically demolished under this definition. As a certified local government, Oregon City can and does apply supplemental protections or regulation to both locally listed, in the case of McLaughlin District, or National Register Districts. And that is, you know, most jurisdictions around the state of Oregon also do that. So, you know, there are probably smaller jurisdictions that don't apply any other protections other than demolition, but most do. So we'll be exploring what some of those other jurisdictions use currently and just kind of take a look at that. No need to necessarily reinvent the wheel if somebody's doing it, you know, really well out there. Let's see, so I did want to, I did want to read from Oregon City's code, which says what the purpose of the local historic overlay is. And I'm just going to read the first of, you know, there's actually quite a number of clauses. But the first one, I thought, really kind of sums up what, you know, the responsibility is, which is to effect and accomplish the protection enhancement and perpetuation of such improvements and of districts which represent or reflect elements of the city's cultural, social, economic, political and architectural history. So it's kind of a mouthful, but it definitely sort of lays out. So have to protect, enhance and perpetuate. Okay. There's also language in the comp plan for Oregon City, including Goal Two, which is acknowledge, protect, enhance and commemorate Oregon City's historic artistic and cultural resources. And then under that, Specific Policy 2.3, facilitate historic preservation programs for retention of federal, state and locally designated historic districts and sites. And then a number of policies or strategies, excuse me, under that, such as 2.3(c), encourage property owners to preserve historic structures in a state as close to their original construction as possible while allowing the structure to be used in an economically viable manner. So I did want to really point out that change itself in any historic district, whether it's National Register or locally designated, is not necessarily an adverse effect. It's how it's managed and what the outcome is. Again, the historic district is really the resource itself. So if you think about the degree of alterations that any one district can sustain before it loses those qualities that make it historic, you know, there's certainly going to be a fair amount of change that any district can really bear. So we'll need to just kind of find where that slider on the bar should be. I was really thinking about just, I had some notes. So that slider is really finding the sweet spot between protection and less change versus leniency and more change, right? Or perhaps property owners who love the district exactly how it is, you know, want to keep everything versus those property owners who want to make more changes and possibly the contractors who are helping them do that work. The slider between really valuing historic preservation and, you know, more toward livability and adaptability, like the solar panel project that you just saw. So too far in any direction means, in one direction means overregulation. And people, you know, especially owners in the district are going to be annoyed at a lack of flexibility and, you know, having to come in front of the HRB for projects that they feel are fairly minor. In the other direction, underregulation or going too far means that the district loses the historic character and feeling for which it's been known and maybe even ultimately could be delisted. At this point, let's see. There's some information in here that I don't necessarily need to go over. I think most of you probably know what guidelines get used for various projects, whether they're in historic districts or in the, I mean, the National Register District, excuse me, versus locally designated district. There are cases, of course, where additions to non-designated resources that meet the definition of new construction are sometimes both new construction and alterations. And so then there's a slew of guidelines that have to get applied to those, both the new construction guidelines and for alterations. Now, in Oregon City, there are basically just the two reviews for historic properties, either a Type I or a Type III in front of the HRB. Some other jurisdictions do have a Type II, which is, you know, kind of an intermediate. You don't have that. And I will note that the previous work that was done on this topic back in 2020 and 2021, the HRB was, at that time, kind of leaning against, you know, putting a new type of review into the mix. But we'll talk a little bit more about what other things that board was thinking about at the time. Let's see, I'm going to let Christina go over the potential project timeline after I complete just the introduction of the topic here. So we'll skip over that one. And McLaughlin Historic Conservation District itself has a timeline going back to 1982, when the first survey work was done. It was designated as a district in 1986. And at that time, they were using a historic period only into the 1930s because at that time, they were looking 50 years from the time of that designation back. And so the first designation had a fairly, you know, fairly limited number of more recent properties that were contributing to the district. But then in 2002, the district was resurveyed and re-adopted. So that end date was shifted to a more recent history with 1953 as the end of the period of significance. In 2004, there was some interest in potentially putting the district on the National Register. But the city did not pursue that. In 2020, that is when the city commission asked the HRB to review the thresholds of historic review, which triggered that prior work by the HRB, to look at really when non-contributing structures should get review. And that was led by planner Kelly Reed. There was also an intern who helped with that during the couple of years that that project, well, I'm not sure it was two full years. But the HRB at that time, and there is an exhibit at the end attached to your memo. It's just a one-pager from that date. I think the. that date, I think this May of 2021. The HRB had looked at some of the factors that go into, you know, what a threshold might be, and they were interested in continuing using footprint, which is what the, the current code utilizes, then also potentially adding in height as a factor. But as I said, probably not include, oh, right, perhaps not including visibility of, of a new addition or a new, new construction, or definitely not including a new type two review based on clear and objective standards. Again, you are not bound by the work because no decisions were made, so feel free to, you know, we, we can talk about their, their findings or not findings, their, their interests at the time more. And I will probably be using some of the past imagery and, you know, maybe some of the explanatory materials as we move forward into this, you know, this, this new workshop. But again, no decisions were made by the previous HRB. A lot has happened since 2002. And while I am listing out here the number of eligible contributing, the locally designated properties, non-contributing but built in the historic period, and then non-contributing to the district, we do know that some of those designations are outdated because there has been some work in the district that would probably cause, I'm just going to guess, more of those to be non-contributing than are listed here. There may be a few, however, that have been brought back closer to their historic state and could be eligible as an eligible contributing building in the, in the district. That is what we hope for historic buildings in the district, even if they are currently non-contributing, is that they have a path to being contributing at some point in their future. It's, again, it's, it's going to be important, though, for us to hear from stakeholders, and that includes those property owners, business or residential renters who might live or work in the district, city staff certainly, contractors, realtors, elected officials, and others, historians. There are, there are trade-offs to changing the current regulatory threshold, and we don't want to dramatically change the rules because that could feel, that could feel unfair and, and capricious. If you've lived in the district for a long time, you know, your neighbor got to do things under certain rules and then suddenly those rules don't apply and things are way different. So change to the rules will certainly help explain them and it should be, it should work for all of these stakeholders, but we'll just, we'll, we'll try to keep it to an amount of change that seems reasonable. So the project will be undertaking a survey of and meeting with McLaughlin residents and property owners. That will be, there's not only a survey that will go out to them, but then we'll have a public meeting for, for us to talk about what this project could look like, what regulation might look like moving forward to them. And we will certainly come back and have their opinions to share with you. That will be just one factor that you'll want to consider as you think about code. Another factor certainly will be the ease of use of the regulations, especially for city staff and, and other regulators such as yourselves, and the degree of protection, enhancement, and perpetuation that that code will, will come to bear on McLaughlin Historic District. Any questions so far?
Are you have a question?
Okay. Right.
Go ahead, Quillid, do you have a question?
Yeah.
Yeah, a quick question from, I guess, more of a lay perspective. Do, do we actually define non-contributing structure? Is that something that shows up in our code? No, we don't. So non-contributing, I don't believe is a 1704 definition. It is a known understanding in our surveys. So if non-contributing becomes a factor, we would need to adopt a definition for it. Okay. So right now, if contributing or non-contributing is not a factor in understanding new construction, you either designated or non-designated. You are non-designated, be you a contributing resource or non-contributing, you hit the 30%. So one thing that Kristin is looking at is if our goal is to try to help non-contributing resources become contributing and contributing resources to be, not to become non-contributing, could that, could that be a factor in a revised definition? And if that's the case, you know, two things would come up. One, we would have to define contributing, non-contributing as part of any code changes. But also there is a larger question. We have a 2002 survey and 20 years of, 22 years have passed. And if that's something the board wants to do, we may need to resurvey our district so we get a better understanding of our current state.
One other criteria would be non-contributing out of period. Because I see that as a, a different threshold as well, so.
Yeah, and there is a philosophical conversation about, you know, when you have an, an area of the city that all kind of was developed at the same time, you can kind of really clearly show a period of significance. But the, McLaughlin is like every older city, it's the first kind of neighborhood next to downtown, and its period of significance sometimes, based on the resources, keeps, keeps being extended as the years go on because there is examples of architecture from every decade because it's the, the neighborhood that's always been continuously improved. And so this conversation of, oh, it was originally 1930s, but then there's some additional 1940s homes that are now, you know, that we today would consider contributing, but back then was less than 50 years. Are there 60s buildings now or early 70s buildings that add to the story of the district? There's some philosophical discussion of like, you know, these, these newer buildings, do they, do they add to the story? Not any, not every building that's 50 years old adds to the story of the district, but some do.
Right. Well, and non-contributing and contributing features are defined in the Secretary of Interior Standards too, so that's something you can always cite. You don't necessarily have to, in my opinion, define that, but it would be, I think, helpful for a layperson to have that information.
Well, I also think, I mean, as Kristin said, the, the district is the resource, right? So I mean, it's contributing, non-contributing, it's all of that. And that's what we, I, that's what I want to look at, is the whole picture. And I mean, it's maybe, it's a bigger bite, I think, but I, I think, yeah, I'd love to get more people on the, on the contributing, you know, it'd be, it'd be great and keep people from dropping off, that would be great as well. But with all these new changes possible coming, it's going to be, it'll, it'll be a challenge.
I think it does make sense to look at the potential of having it surveyed again.
And that could be one of the recommendations that comes out. You know, the, the work plan is again for the summer, for the next biennium, so, and, you know, a certified local government grant could come in for the next round. So there could be more recommendations than just recommended code amendments that come out of this process.
Right. And I did have a question about, I'm sorry. Why was National Register, why, why was that not pursued for the district?
Sure, there wasn't public support for it. So the city commission didn't want, did not want to move forward.
Okay. Was the public just afraid that that would impose more regulations?
I think with the National Register District, more non-designated structures would be than regulated. So the folks that hadn't to this date been regulated didn't want to be further regulated and the city commission, I mean, that was some of it, but there was just not a, enough public support for the commission to move forward.
Okay. Because if it was resurveyed and that was pursued, then that would help us, that would help guide us as to what an adverse effect would be.
So the 2002 survey was anticipation of a potential National Register Historic District.
Got it.
So it's available online, but it showed a couple of options. You know, back in 2002, a 50% contributing was kind of the, the rule of thumb, it's not as much as much anymore, but so they kind of looked, what would a boundary of at least 50% or more resources be considered contributing? There were a couple of options. One was a smaller one, one was a middle, one was a bigger one, and just, there was not kind of direction from the community enough that the commission wanted to move forward.
Thank you for providing that for me.
I think in our discussions with the community, I, I think that should be one of the discussion items for sure, is, is there an interest? And see if there is an interest, and maybe there's not, maybe there is. But things have changed and there's a lot of people, different people here and a lot of, I hear a lot of interest, but maybe not enough, but.
I see it as doing nothing but helping not only the preservation of the neighborhood, but, but also defining what that looks like for property owners. So that's my opinion. I think having something written down as a guideline for people, they can look to the criteria for significance and, and then whatever we do, you know, whatever, whatever else we do to define that would be in the realm of historic integrity. So the significance is something we could just say like, hey, guys, we already have this. You know, we know that this is, the neighborhood is significant for these reasons, right? Now, how is what you're going to do going to impact the historic integrity? Which is always the question, right?
Just so you know, the, for certified local government grants, because of some recent neighborhoods that this Historic Preservation Office, you know, put a lot of money forward for survey inventory in National Register and then ended up not getting the community support, they kind of want to see it upfront. So if you are asking for, you know, survey for a National Register nomination or as part of a National Register nomination, they really need to see community support in the upfront as part of the grant. They do not want to give money knowing that at the end of the process is pulled because the, the support really wasn't there.
Right, makes sense.
Yeah. Yes, sir, Mr. Green.
Just a question, I guess for Christina, what would be helpful, I think for me is if you could furnish us which HRB sessions they discuss that.
That may be hard, it would be about 2003, 2004.
No, no, I'm thinking just of the previous discussion, the 2021 sessions for the, the threshold of new construction, you know, when they discussed that, maybe in two or three meetings.
I'll try to give an audit of the Zoom, it was Zoom meetings, so the audits of the Zoom meetings that occurred. And I do know the, the exhibit that you have attached was kind of the last conversation the board had, so that's available, but I will try to do an audit of all the previous agendas I can find that relate to compatible change and I can send that to you.
Or the, or the dates of whichever sessions where that was a topic of discussion. So we could go back and either review the minutes or watch it on YouTube and, and get some sense of the discussion.
I imagine, yeah, I can, I can get that to the board.
Yeah.
Just to kind of follow up, I think that Julia, your point about the significance of the, of the district, there's, there's not a lot in the materials of the survey that was done in 2002 that really talks about the district as a whole. There's certainly, you know, quite a bit of information about each structure, but there's not, you know, there's not as much as I, you know, just as a, you know, as a historian myself and somebody who's looking for keeping, you know, those qualities that you would find in the district alive and intact, there's not a lot of description of that in here. So having a resurvey could also help define those qualities in a way that would help this board, you know, regulate and look out for those qualities. Right. And also, I think, help with the boundary of determining what structures really are contributing and what, which ones aren't, you know, if you have that historic context to, to guide you, so. Okay. I'd, I'd like to, in the next, I know it's getting late here, but I'd, I'd, kind of the meat of my discussion with you is to go through the possible factors that might really be used as regulation or for a threshold of regulation in this district. And so what I've done in the memo is just try to give each of them a, a sort of one word or as close to that as I could, definition, and starting with footprint because that is what is being used in the, in the current code. Of course, again, that could be just clarified, you know, what's, what's enclosed, you know, do decks count? Things like that could be clarified, but you could continue to use footprint. Another one that many other jurisdictions use is height, and that could be either as sort of a percentage or as a relationship to the existing structure or as an absolute value. Volume, which is really kind of a combination of both of those. So, you know, footprint and plus height equals volume. The next one is designation or age. And I think, Robert, you were mentioning whether non-contributing or, or those, those structures that lack historicity, is that a word? You know, could be taken into consideration. And certainly that could be defined simply at this point with the survey that we have as 1953. So anything that is built after 1953 goes in one bucket and perhaps gets, you know, no, no regulation or very little regulation. Prior to that is where we start exploring some nuance of what, you know, what might get review. So that is one possibility. The other is, is simply by, you know, designating it as the, as the survey did, as, as, you know, using those terms, non-contributing or contributing, then you do have to put those terms into the code and make sure they're there and people understand them. So it might be simpler to just use a date if that's, you know, if that's of any interest in that designation or age category. The next one is use, and this is one that I saw several other jurisdictions use, really making a differential between residential use and non-residential use. So non-residential in this case in McLaughlin would be the structures primarily alone. So non-residential in this case in McLaughlin would be the structures primarily along, along sevens that are in commercial, um, maybe there's an, uh, institutional use and then there might be some churches scattered in there. So deciding whether you want the same type of regulation or the same threshold for, you know, those two different pots of structures or buildings. The next one is cost of the project. This is one that I know the city of Portland, um, still does use to some extent, and that is just the property owner, when they come in, you know, to the desk, they report how much the project is going to cost. And that basically would kick them into one or the other type of review, um, just depending on what that threshold is. Another one is really the location or visibility of the work. And this is one that quite a few other jurisdictions use, is specifying whether something is, say, street-facing or if it's in the front of a structure or if it is within the front or, um, or, or, um, street-facing setback. Um, so just sort of defining some, some threshold there about people are allowed to do work if it's, you know, a certain distance back or behind the building. Um, and then they will need a review if it's in front of that. Area of attachment is, this is, this is maybe going to be a, a difficult one to explain, but I'm really using a concept here that is based on the Secretary of the Interior standards where an addition to a historic building, um, should be attached in as minimal a way as possible. So it's not really regulating the size of an addition. It's really, it's regulating what the attachment point is and making sure that that is as small as possible. I haven't seen any jurisdictions use this one, by the way, because I think it's, it's a little, it's a little tough, although it is certainly taken from, uh, National Register, um, bulletins. The final one here is loss of historic materials proposed. And so it's making a, um, a difference in regulation between, uh, additions or newer work that has, has, uh, been added or changed on the building since the end of the period of significance and the, um, existing historic materials which are still on the building. Um, and, and trying to, um, make regulations around that so that you keep those historic materials as much as possible. And I think there was at least one jurisdiction I found that used that concept as part of a, a threshold. So if, if you have any feedback for me tonight about, if any of those really seem unworkable, it would be great to, you know, have a few to strike off the list. Otherwise, um, I think, you know, we, we should talk about most of these as a way to consider a threshold. Um, but honestly, you know, the, the more we can kind of focus in on what are really workable solutions, the better. So you can definitely help me out by, um, just letting me know if any of these just take off the list. Again, these are, these are going to be used in a way as incentives, right? To, to shape the kind of alterations or additions that you want to see that are positive or at least okay for the district. Um, so it's, it's pretty powerful to be able to, to, you know, shape people's work. These are, you know, going to be property owners in the district and if they want to avoid having a review, they will certainly consider meeting, you know, what this, what this regulation says. They're going to consider, well, I am going to keep my alteration, you know, meeting whatever these, this threshold is so that I don't need to come in in front of this board as fun as it is. So, um, I have begun to look at some code concepts that other jurisdictions use. And I think I mentioned, you know, a, a, a couple of these already. Um, and, and I'm just using first the, the very shorthand, um, definition, I guess. Uh, city of Corvallis uses the, the area or footprint. It uses visibility and it uses height relative to your, to the original. City of Albany uses visibility as well as the concept about loss of historic materials. It's a little harder to, um, you know, to figure that out just across the counter if you're coming in, you know, for, for a permit or for, to find out whether you're exempt from, from historic regulation, but it certainly can be done. Astoria basically just uses, uh, location, uh, or visibility. Salem uses quite a few things, uh, use, visibility, loss of historic materials. Um, I included one non-Oregon jurisdiction in my first pass here and it's a bigger city. They basically allow everything except for demolition in local districts. And in National Register districts, um, almost everything is exempt, um, except for non-resident, for residential uses. Um, and, and there's, there's other regulations that go along with that, but they're, you know, they're kind of on one end of allowing most things in districts. The city of Bend, um, actually has no exemptions. So really everything that is a change in their historic or locally designated districts gets reviewed. And these are explained just a little bit more in the chart on page five. Um, but if any of you have suggestions for a particular jurisdiction that you know of, you know, how the rules work and believe it might be helpful for this, this process, I am really happy to, um, you know, jump into their code and kind of give you a little bit more information about a few other jurisdictions. Um, this is just, you know, just a handful. Um, and we can talk about any of them in, in, in greater detail. But I think that's really all I had tonight was just to kind of introduce these concepts and see what you thought about, um, some of these factors that might be used as a threshold for review.
I think many of these, um, existing regulations we have, a lot, you know, in our code already. The cost, uh, that, that one's kind of, that one's tough for me to, to work through.
I struggled with that one too.
And area of attachment, I, I mean, I get the idea of it. Um, I, but I, I would, I'd like to pursue that more. It'd be interesting to see more about that.
Okay.
Um, but I think the really important part, uh, is you mentioned first thing is that you want to research what's happening now in the legislative, in this legislature, because I think doing a piece of that upfront would be beneficial before we start the process or before we get in too deep and see how much of that's going, can be affected or what we can or can't.
Mm-hmm. The interesting timing here, because the world never works sequentially. Uh, so we will submit our requests to be exempted from the waiver program, but we may not hear back for six more months.
Yeah.
Uh, or we may, we may hear back soon, right? We don't know. So the Housing, uh, uh, Accountability and Production Office, HAPO, I don't think gets fully, like, they're just, ah, finished hiring their staff, you know, they're, they're just, they're no, they don't even exist as an entity until January, I think.
July.
July. And so it could be that we go through this whole process and we still don't know if we get formally. So we do have a certified local government grant. We, whatever we do, uh, the work that Kristen does, we don't have any more money after July. So whatever work we do is paid here. So one thing to think about is, uh, you know, if we get the exemption, we kind of are within our same worldview, I guess. And if we don't get the exemption, um, it, it, you know, it's, it's probably a reconsideration of the process or if, if maybe we have a option B, you know, if, if, if that exemption is not.
Right. Couldn't we, couldn't we like do it in tandem? I mean, we could, we could look at what is.
Mm-hmm.
And, and I'm just, my suggestion is just to get, to kind of get a, a thumbnail sketch of what, what's the potential that could affect us on one hand. Let's work on what we want on the other hand. And, you know, if, if we get the exemption, great, we're, we're on, we're on the path. If we don't get the exemption, we've at least discussed it as it could be a potential. And that, that's, I guess, what my thought process is. I mean, I don't want to put a whole lot of extra work on anybody, but I, I did think it makes sense in our discussion.
Yeah.
I, I know, one thing, I, I don't think there's too much collision between this and the hap, HAPO, because the HAPO really is new construction on a new vacant parcel with high density, essentially, right?
True. But if, if, this is this conversation, I think, uh, back to kind of plain language and how do you communicate with the neighbors and neighborhood? So one house is locally designated and we have this specific regulation. This other vacant lot or this, uh, resource that's doing a detached duplex, which the detached duplex might request all of those waiver, you know, all of those, um, adjustments.
Uh-huh.
But that's a separate piece that may have a very different looking building. And then I am a, a non-designated resource and I want to do, I want to add two more bedrooms to the back of my house and that, it's 32%, right? Addition. And now I have a third level of regulation, a different category. How do we communicate the difference? Because three very different additions could come out of those three different projects.
Yeah.
And if I say, well, I couldn't do that, but my neighbor could. Why does my neighbor get vinyl windows, but I don't get vinyl windows? You know, we're having to explain and for, and really at the end of the day, you can explain as much as you want, but if it doesn't seem fair, it doesn't seem fair. And so I think that fairness and the purpose is going to be, uh, the, the guiding, um, you know, look of how we, we see this. So I, I really do hope we get, uh, the waiver because I, I think it does make our job a lot harder for the compatible change. Because I think there's definitely going to be a sense of unfairness of when you are in one category and this other project is in another. Because you can add another unit pretty easily to make something a duplex.
Absolutely. Uh, any more suggestions, comments?
I guess just a clarification. I mean, essentially, once this process is, is through and, and these criteria are clarified and so forth, it is still a threshold if they come in with an application and it is below, below those standards, below the 30%, it's below the height, whatever. In other words, that, that will be made at intake, correct?
Yeah. That would be a type one building permit review.
And, and then if it meets that criteria, it's a type one application. We don't see it.
Mm-hmm. Correct. So, uh, timing wise, um, I guess really the next steps, clarification for what Kristen will be working on between now and January. I'll work with, uh, Mayor Powell on trying to find the right date for a McLaughlin neighborhood meeting. And maybe we were thinking of maybe potentially even having an open house with property owners and residents, maybe in conjunction with a future McLaughlin meeting, kind of a, a co-meeting. Maybe we go ahead before the meeting starts. Um, so there's not two separate meetings. We can combine it. So, uh, offline, I'll maybe work with you to think about that through, kind of in that, maybe February, early March?
Sure. I, uh, uh, January and March are the general meetings.
Okay. So maybe, so maybe it's the first Thursday of March, is that correct?
Sure. Visibly, yeah.
Okay.
I'll, I'll, yeah, talk to the group.
Okay.
Figure something out.
Yeah. So I think that is one of the ideas. And then we would have a survey sent out ahead of time. So folks could do the survey if they wanted, they could come in person, they could have a conversation. And then we could all respond back to the board and kind of in that April.
Are we going to do it separately in Canema or will do?
Well, Canema, every addition requires review by the board. So that 30% is not as much for non-designated.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, because everything is kind of regulated. Even a 1970s building in Canema will come to the board if there's an addition.
Okay.
May I ask you a couple of questions? If that, if that's okay.
Sure.
So we talk a lot in here about massing. Is that the same as volume? And you're, okay. Um, and then did, did I hear from more than one of you that you don't want to have cost as something that we, um, look at?
I wrote down use and cost is my two.
And I did too. That's the one that, when I went through it, I thought, eh, that, that one I, uh, would be the first one I think I would avoid because if somebody's coming in, you might say with upscale materials, it, you know, they're spending a lot of money for upscale materials, but it's not a very big project. And so I don't think that's a real good threshold.
Yeah. I think it speaks to fairness, right? I mean, you know, if somebody comes in and they're going to do it themselves versus somebody who's going to hire a contractor, it's going to be a much lower cost. So to make that determination on, based on cost, I, I would say, I felt the same way is probably be the, that'd be the first one I'd probably drop off, you know? But, um.
That makes sense.
And the other ones, we have a lot of them already.
Right. Yeah. Just, um, I think what Kristen was saying, we have them, but maybe what we do through this project is clarify or kind of refine them a little bit. Um, so yeah, that, that makes sense. Um, and I guess just, just for clarification, so what, what we're attempting to do, let's say with, uh, I'll take volume, which we talked a lot about massing. So what we may come up with is some standard that says if you're under this amount, you're exempt from review, right? Like, that's kind of how we're looking at all this. Okay. And then was there, there are two, two of you, I think, Gordon and Robert or Dave, you said you weren't interested in the use as an exemption? Is that?
That was.
What did the rest of you think? You want to?
That's just one that I wrote down that I don't think it, if we're going to put resources into doing something, I don't think, for me, the use isn't something that matters. It's, it doesn't, it doesn't change the historical significance or the, what we're trying to accomplish because of the use of the building. So there was just one thing that if I had to rank them in order, that's my number nine behind cost, you know? So.
Uh, I guess it depends on define how we define use. I mean.
Right. I, I tend to think use is very important, um, function, you know, because that defines the feature. And by feature, I mean, you know, property, object, site, whatever we're saying. Um, so I tend to think it's pretty important, but, um, especially if the function is tied up in the significance of the property. So, but I think, you know, economic feasibility is also an issue. Um, so if somebody wanted to, you know, give it a new use, then, um, you know, it's something to consider.
My idea with use was more based around zoning and, you know, uh, commercial, residential rather than, um, you know, the, absolutely, if you, if you say, hey, this is a shed.
Yeah.
And then we bring usage to that, that's a pretty big determining factor.
Right.
If we're talking about a building facade versus a residential home, then use all of a sudden, to me, flies out the window.
Right.
I think use is determined by zoning, right?
Yeah. I think, I, I, there's two pieces in that.
I think there's two pieces in that.
Sure.
I think, I'm not hearing from everybody, commercial versus residential just seems like a toe is too much into the zoning code. And really, I think that unfairness piece comes into it of like clearly communicating the purpose. But there is an interesting conversation about primary versus secondary or outbuilding, which I know has a use component, but that's our 200 square foot threshold of standalone. And I can tell you, I, the board reviews a lot of new garages, and they've approved every single one of them almost, because, you know, your siding is this, your door is this, your window is, like, you could create a HRB policy on what acceptable detached garages should look like pretty easily. So, that could be easily a future, if you wanted to allow the threshold to be higher for outbuildings, for example.
Right.
That could be, you could create a kind of a clear objective checklist for outbuildings that wouldn't need to go in front of the board.
Right. It's interesting. It's philosophical, too, like you said. I mean, some neighborhoods, let's, a streetcar suburban, streetscape, let's say, a garage would be really important, the back of the house, and that visibility would be really important to that particular type of neighborhood, as well as the facade, you know? So, it's just, it's so dependent on the resource, I think.
Yeah. I mean, Lads Edition and Portland is very much defined by its alley access, rear lawn of garages, right? We don't have that here in McLaughlin. That's not a defining factor of McLaughlin like it is in Lads Edition.
Right.
You know, speaking of front facade, I think there was, and I think maybe when we were talking about Denver, or during that meeting we, that we had, there was a lot of photos that they showed, the front facade was historic, but the back was not at all historic. And that's something I think that we could look at, you know, because there's a lot of people that, the front's great, and that's what they wanted to keep it at, like we did the Petzold Building, right? I mean, the front, we kept wood and everything, right? Everything else is aluminum or aluminum wood. That's something that I think we could have a discussion about.
Right.
Because, you know, the living, rear living area of a house that's out of view, maybe that can be different.
Well, and it's in, in preservationist philosophy, it should be different. It should be a different style altogether, because you should have distinction between the build dates, you know? So, it's an interesting thing to discuss.
So, I'm going to put my planner hat on for a second and my project manager hat on, because we could spend the next two years philosophically discussing this, but we have.
We have seven months.
We do, because we have a, we have a grant, right? And so, I'll be working with Kristen and Aquila and you on each meeting. There probably will be defining decision points that you'll need to make to keep us on track, and homework. So, I don't have any now, but I, you may get some emails from me in the interim time period, since we don't have a December meeting to start thinking about things, because, probably not January, but we will probably have some definitive direction needed to keep us on track. And there may be a point when, you know, what, what, what issues rise to make the most sense. One thing I haven't done on a staff level is some of these attributes and factors may be harder to implement on a staff level, or there may be additional complexities that I'd want to bring in. So, you may hear some of that in January and February, like, this is much easier for us. Because really, at the end of the day, you're asking building staff and the front-end planning staff to look at a proposal, read a definition, and answer to this applicant, this is a type one or this is a type three process. So, think of your audience, it's the applicant and front-end staff.
Yeah.
And what's going to be a reasonable definition that is clear to them as well.
Yeah.
So, thank you all.
Thank you.
For your time. Is there anything else you want to pass on to Kristen before January?
If we want to communicate with Kristen, do we go through you? How is that best managed?
What I can do, yes, you know, just for the sake of, I want to see, just so I can all coordinate, but let me know, I'll forward it on. I will give you Kristen's email, but just know that please CC me, just so I'm.
No, completely.
And as always, even though this is a, it's not a public hearing and you don't have conflict of interest, it's legislative process, we can't have serial email meetings. So, do make sure that I, if you see some from me, it'll probably be CC'd, be CC'd, and then don't include everybody in emails, so we don't have a problem with a serial that happens via email, which we cannot have.
She'll, she can just distribute to the rest of us.
Yeah, yeah. You can say, hey, can you forward this information on to the board members? I have some thoughts. I'm happy to say, you know, board member X had some of these thoughts, I'm sending them to you. But what we can't do is have a collaborative.
Right.
Email discussion, because that's.
Sounds good.
But I'm happy to forward anything on to both Kristen and.
Right. Thank you. Thanks, Kristen.
Yeah, I'm really looking forward to this process.
Yeah, we are, too.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Okay. Communications.
Well, welcome, Julia. I'm so excited to have you on the board. And here's your one and only 2024 meeting. We'll be back in January 2025. We have December off. So, have a great December. We'll see you in January. And look for emails from me about this project. And hopefully, cross your fingers, we'll have all submitted our waiver to HAPO for the exemptions. And I really do hope we get it, because I think it's really, it's going to be real hard if we don't get it. So, send us all your best thoughts as we start hitting send in the, I think December 1 is our deadline, December 1 is our deadline, so.
All right. Well, we have full faith in you.
I disagree.
I have just one procedural question, I guess. Now that Sabrina's gone, we actually nominated a chair.
We have it. We will do that in the January meeting.
In January?
Yeah. So, we'll, in the January meeting, we'll have elections for chair and vice chair.
Gotcha. Okay. I really appreciate it, guys. Thank you. I had somebody in mind, so.
All right. Let's, any other communications? Anything from the board to? All right. Then I guess we are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.